Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. This is the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting on Thursday, April 8th, 2021. The time is now 6:33 PM. On this evening's agenda, we have one item under new business, and that is the Budget Review of the Board of Education, including the capital items. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Newton, so he can open the meeting for us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I'm just gonna say good evening to everybody. Great to see you. Thanks for for having us. Looking forward to the discussion tonight. And well, I'll turn it over to Tim, and Tim's gonna start us off, and then I'll be back in a minute.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. And thanks, the Board of Ed, for having us. It's always a good time of the year to come together. I'm going to try to attempt to give you some really good news. I won't be able to do it as well as. Amy, I'm sorry.
Oh, I can't hear you.
Anna, can you hear Timothy speaking?
Hi, Anna. Can you hear? Nope. Look like, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure to get a text in a minute.
Okay. You want me to continue, Camille?
Just give me 30 seconds, please.
Okay.
I've learned today that there's a separate set of settings in Zoom in addition to your computer settings for volume and microphone and speakers. I learned that today. Same way, Anna's gonna learn it.
Okay, she's going to log out and try to log back in. So in the meantime, let us proceed.
Proceed, okay. So what I was saying at our board meeting on Monday, Amy Drown, our Assistant Superintendent, gave us some very good news, and she was beaming. She was so happy with the news, and that is that all the grades in Eastline School District, all the kids are in school five days a week as of this Monday. And that was fantastic news, and I hope that the next, that the past three days have been as exciting as the first day. So I'm looking forward to hearing how things have been going. The neat part about this is that this enables us and the children to get back to a kind of a normal routine and make that transition of going from what they had been doing, this hybrid model, to being in school five days a week. And this is really good because it sets up the start of next year so well, because we'll look on through that transition. And I think that's great news. This has been, you know, obviously, just an absolute crazy ride over the last 13 months. And I just, once again, would like to thank everybody who's been involved, in particular, thank the administrative team for their leadership during this time. It's been really amazing. The faculty, all the members of the school district have put in countless hours above and beyond the cause. I just, it's just amazing. And even our Eastline Board of Education has been working hard. We've had some exciting meetings, kind of a little bit worn out and tired at some times, especially during those winter months. It was, it was difficult, but we all came together and pulled together our budget recommendations, and the board adopted this recommendation unanimously as we bring it forward to the Board of Finance for, obviously, for your review and input. But I'd also like to thank the Board of Finance and all the members of the community in Eastline for supporting the technology investment that we made last year. We started talking about it last year at this time, and we pulled it off and got the computers in and all the devices and the infrastructure and to make this past year doable from a virtual blended learning type of model. But it also sets up an opportunity for the future and the use of the technology as part of our overall educational processes. I really think the Board of Finance was outstanding in their support of the school district during this very, very tough time. I am, I go, I'd like to thank you for that. The last thing I'd like to say before I turn it over to Jeff is that we are still in this transitional period. I'd just like to emphasize is that we really don't know what we don't know in terms of where the kids are as they come back and return to the district. There will be children, we just don't know all the setbacks and deficiencies and the magnitude of that. It's great that we're gonna have the kids, we've got the kids back in school full-time, and we'll start to have, we'll get an even better idea of exactly what's gonna be needed over the next probably two years. And toward the end of the presentation that Jeff makes, you'll be hearing some more detail on that. But with that, I'll turn over, back over to Jeff and let him do the heavy lifting with his administrative team.
Thanks, Tim. And I have to first say, you know, this team is, as Tim mentioned, the administrative group, this is the most phenomenal team I've ever worked with. Amazing people that are, you know, sitting on the screen tonight have done so much work and so much effort and put in so many countless hours. We really just can't thank them enough because they just, they have such a talent and we're lucky to have them in district. So many thanks to Amy, Mariana, you know, Kim and Chris, who are on with us tonight. And as Tim said, many thanks to all of you, and we want to share a few of those thanks as we move through the presentation. So I'm gonna just share my screen. Camille, I think I probably have, yep, I have the ability to do that. All right. So. Everybody see that? Okay. All right, great. You should have, Camille, I don't know if you had, I'm sure you probably passed this on to all the Board of Finance members. We sent it over earlier today. Great. Okay, so hopefully you had a chance, you know, to take a look at the slides. Many of you have seen them. We've used many of these slides with the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, and we've added some, you know, towards the end, which we'll talk about, which are associated with the SIR funds as well as the ARP funds. But these first few slides, I'm just gonna kind of move through, you know, fairly, fairly quickly, because we've talked about them, you know, quite a bit. First and foremost, you know, a lot of work and effort goes into this process that, you know, we want to make sure our community is aware of. You know, we, Board of Ed administrators, Board of Finance members, we invite, you know, everybody to the table to have discussions. And we've done that for the last few years, and it's works in our favor. It's been successful to have those, that dialogue. So, you know, we had Budget Workshop One and Workshop Two in December and then January. And then, you know, additional meetings, as you can see, that there was a lot of effort and discussion and work that went into the preparation and the eventual adoption of Board of Ed's budget, which took place on February 22nd. And I just love this quote, you know, coming together is beginning, keeping together is progress and working together, you know, is a success. And that's, I feel like, what we have done as a unit here in Eastline. So when we think about this current fiscal year and some identified problems, you know, three of them just stood out for us as we all put this together, you know, a few months, a few months back, these slides, and have adjusted since then. Number one, you know, the COVID protocols, you know, they totally required an adjustment to how we were living our lives within school instruction and remote instruction, you know, for children and what staff had to endure in administration. Second, you know, the instructional technology assistance that was so needed and required to be able to do and pull off, you know, what we did. And then third, you know, to enhance, you know, the student learning and trying to move forward, all the classroom protocols, how we utilize online instruction, it all need to be, all needed to be quickly developed and quickly implemented. So those were three identified problems that we were really faced with, you know, as we moved through through this year. We broke each of those down, so I'm not gonna read through these. I just want to hit the outcomes on these. The first being, you know, that adjustment to in-school instruction, you know, many thanks again to all of you and the Board of Education because you were able to get those devices and we're able to put them in the hands of students, all of our students, you know, deploying, you know, over 2,500 devices and additional devices to teachers and paraprofessionals and all prior to the holiday break this past December. Huge undertaking from our tech department. And, you know, it's humming along now, but it was an immense amount of work. And there's still a lot of work that needs to occur. Also, you know, the instructional programs, you know, had to continue, they needed to continue, you know, despite COVID impacts, and we made them happen by having that technology. The second problem, as it pertains to technology assistance, you know, putting devices in the hands of every student and new device in the hands of staff, it's great, but they all have to know how to use them. And they all need, and students need to be able to take them home and operate them at home. So we needed support to do that. And you can see the outcome. We were able to have instructional technology coach support, monitoring the effectiveness of those implemented, you know, supports that we were providing for parents. We also had a help desk usage system where, you know, parents could call in and request through our custom computer vendor that we utilize assistance when it came to using their devices and their children's devices at home. And the third, just, you know, enhancing that student learning, you know, this is where teachers were, their world was really, really flipped upside down. They had to engage so much further with online tools and software. You know, February of 2020, they were utilizing around 30 to 31, you know, online tools and software programs. This past February, 2021, they were utilizing 63 online tools and software and monitoring and working through those. So doubling the capacity of what they were utilizing all through interaction with students, you know, often remote as well as in the classroom. So when we think about the current fiscal year, again, just a quick thank you, you know, to everybody, because, you know, the funding for that and the devices was able to allow us to be successful, you know, in that adventure. So thank you again for supporting that. Yeah, we just wanted to put up a quick slide. We talked with the, briefly with the Board of Selectmen, you know, about this, that, you know, we do continue to look for, you know, town and Board of Education administrative collaboration. We wanted to share, you know, some of the things that we're already doing. You know, the accounting, it's a big piece. I know Anna Johnson and Mariana Stevens, they're working on, you know, getting Munis set up. So we have, you know, accounting software across the town and Board of Education. You see health insurance, general operations, you know, we continue to look for those things. And IT is another one that, you know, has been discussed in the town as an IT committee. COVID put some brakes on that, but, you know, we'll continue some discussions in that realm as well. So we appreciate the ongoing collaboration of a lot of services and continue to look for new ones. We talk about, you know, this current fiscal year, again, achievements to date. I won't, you know, read all of these, but, you know, as Tim just mentioned, we do have all of our students back in now, five days a week, for what we've gone through this year and to be able to get all of our kids back in the building, using appropriate social distancing and PPE. They're doing a great job. We're just trying to hold on to that now for the next eight weeks of the school year. But they're back five days, and we're excited to have them back. And in addition, you know, to all of these other successful things that we accomplished, you know, this year. So when we talk about and think about next year, so 2122, you've probably heard, you know, me state a couple times, and the Board of Ed has, you know, what's our problem statement for next year? And Tim alluded to it, you know, when he spoke in the beginning, you know, with the disrupted school year that we have had, you know, we don't know necessarily what next year is going to bring. We're trying to quickly ascertain what that will be. And now having kids back five days a week is going to help. But, you know, by the end of this year, and as we roll into the beginning of next year, will give us the opportunity to identify what are the student achievement gaps that are going to be in place? Where will the needed student support services be that we have to put in place? And we also have to focus on making sure that, you know, our adult, our classroom sizes are what they should be to make sure we're providing supports, you know, for kids, both in the class but also in small group, because that's where the magic really happens. So we're gonna have, need a collaborative effort between all of us and really identifying as we walk into next year, what those, those supports are going to be and as we prepare for those. So priorities, we always have to have some priorities. You think about next year, there's five core priorities that our district is going to be focused on. First, you know, the achievement gaps, we just talked a little bit about those, making sure that we're identifying the cohorts of students of where those gaps are and attacking that with the supports and modifications and adjustments for kids. The second being SEL, you know, the social emotional learning for students, you have a lot of students that had a lot of angst and still do about being back in the school buildings. That's going to continue into next year. We need to have those SEL supports for our students, also need to have them for staff, as many staff, you know, struggle and they're still struggling with being onsite. Blended learning, we now have the devices in every child's hand, that can't go away. Blended learning component, we gotta have a 50-50 mix in a way of students continuing to use their devices while in classrooms, onsite, and at home, while also being off their devices and engaging in authentic learning and activities in the classrooms as well. So it's a blended learning approach that we're remaining focused on. Mentioned class size, we need to maintain those, you know, appropriate class sizes based on the Board of Ed guidelines and establishing a new 2122 baseline for the work that needs to occur for kids next year off of what the instructional model, the hybrid model that we use for most of the year this year, you know, has done. So those are our priorities as we think about next year. So you've seen the numbers, this is just kind of a breakdown. I won't go through all of these, but just so you can see where we landed, the 3.79 with some of that is the staffing increases, you know, that we're gonna talk about in just a minute and comprise a good chunk of our presentation tonight. But, you know, this was from the start, the preliminary budget out of the gate, we were 263. We dropped down after making reductions and then moved back up after adding unanticipated expenses for this current year, some staffing expenses. Then we put in the new additional staff members and then made some further reductions to bring it down to 3.79 as it stands right now. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that number towards the end. We take a look at the SIR as well as ARP funds. So the major budgetary requests and needs. So we're gonna talk about these items as we move through the next set of slides. And I'm gonna turn it over to Kim Davis, who's gonna start just talking about, you know, the school social worker supports. Key element as we move into next year and beyond, ensuring that we're making those homeschool connections and rebuilding the bridges that have truly been broken or disrupted as we walk through this year. So, Kim, I'm gonna start with you. We're gonna walk through each of these. So for the high school social worker piece.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much, and thanks for having us tonight. It's nice to see all of you. So the problem that we have identified, and actually for a number of years have identified, is our social work support for students across the district. And while this one is even more, I think, important because of the recent pandemic conditions, it is something that we've been working towards fulfilling for the last couple of years in our operating budget. So this position would be at the high school because we have an intensive therapeutic special education program there as well as nearly 1,000 students in our building. And so we know that adolescence is a time when mental health disorders really have a significant onset, and there is need for clinical support in the high school within the school day context. So what we'd like to do to provide coverage for both the general education population at the high school as well as the special ed classes that we have is to add an additional social worker to support the projected trend of an increased need for mental health support at the high school. This would fulfill the overall plan that we had started with a few years ago, as I said, and would bring us closer to the ratio of one social worker per 250 students, which is what the National Association of Social Work recommends. We look at this in light of the other providers we have in our building. So please know that that doesn't mean we're gonna continue to ask for additional social workers at the high school because we do have school psychologists and guidance counselors. But we do feel that it's important to have that clinical mental health side of things represented through the social work position. So if you want to go to the next slide, there's a little bit of data here to support this need. At the high school, we have had so far to date 53 crisis incidents, which are characterized by a 211 call for mobile psychological services, perhaps a 911 call for an ambulance, a DCF referral, a suicidal ideation, or threat assessment situation. So they usually require multiple providers and critical supervision of a student when those things occur and then follow-up counseling and supportive plans afterwards. We also have the middle school data on there, just so you can see comparatively speaking, the middle school and high school are at this time trending in a similar fashion. I should say these numbers are, you know, compared to last year, which we really can't compare because the year was shortened. So they are sort of on track compared to the year previous. We have 13 students in our high school therapeutic program, as I mentioned, which is an intensive program that runs for students who have social emotional disorders, and it helps us not place them out of district because we can provide the more intensive services here on our campus, which, as you know, out of district tuition is very expensive as well as the transportation costs to have students transported to and from. So with only one high school social worker, we have trouble, you know, meeting everybody's needs in that area. And then on the next slide, you'll see another area related, this is solely related to special education. It's a Coda for short, but a Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant. We have a current caseload at Eastline Middle School and Nyonic Center School where one OT, one occupational therapist currently serves 101 students, which is a lot of students to follow. And whether that's for direct support or consultative services, the average caseload for an OT should be somewhere between 40 and 50 students on their caseload. So obviously, our person is carrying twice that many. And so that does not lead to effective services and, you know, the staff member feeling very effective in their job. So what we'd like to do is rather than hire another occupational therapist, which is a higher level certified individual, we'd like to hire the Occupational Therapy Assistant, which is someone who can do all the therapeutic duties, see kids directly, provide services, attend meetings. What they don't provide is the evaluation of a student who may be in need of services. That's a job done by the OT. So it's cost-effective because this person is paid at a slightly lower rate because they don't have the same education and qualification levels as the OT, but they do an awesome job. We have one currently who works between Haynes and the preschool, and it's been an extremely effective model to manage the large caseload we had at that level. And, you know, now we're seeing that need at the middle school. So. And the next slide, I'm gonna turn it over, I'll give it back to you, Jeff, in case there's any questions, and then we'll hear from Amy as I understand it.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Kim. Yeah, we're gonna go right to Amy and Amy, we're gonna talk about the elementary middle school math coaches.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everyone. And before I get started, just behalf of the technology team, I can clearly say to you, we wouldn't have made it without the town rallying. I can say that from a team perspective. So we are forever thankful. So putting on my tech cap and putting that aside, now I'm gonna put on my curriculum and instruction hat, which is around mathematics. The bottom line for us is that we want to see our students' growth in mathematics, especially our students in grade three to eight increase. We are not happy with the percentage of growth that we're seeing our students making in grades three to eight as assessed by the standardized assessment given by the State Department. Now, what's important to note is our students did not take that assessment last year because of the pandemic. So they will take it, though, this spring. And currently, right now, we have one math coach that currently supports all three of our elementary buildings, and we have no math coaches at the middle school or high school level. So for us, that's a problem. We have one person stretched sort of too thin with a caseload that is way too high as far as intervention and also not being able to accelerate some of our teacher's skill set and the teaching of mathematics. So our solution is to truly develop a mathematics coaching model that spans across the three elementary schools as well as at the middle school. We have a coaching models for literacy, which involves across all three elementaries and at the middle. We know the benefits of that position, and we have reaped the benefits of that position in regards to ELA. So we know that this is an effective model for our staff as well as our students. What's important, though, about the coaching position is it serves two roles. They provide intervention services for students who need intervention in regards to mathematics because we want to make sure our students have high-quality staff, but also at the same token, their job is to coach our general education teachers to make sure that they are teaching mathematics in the best possible way to our students, so that we're closing in those gaps and addressing those areas of needed improvement on a daily basis. So we are really looking at a growth measure. The Board of Education feels that in looking at our achievement data, that's only telling us how students do on a particular day of the year. What our Board of Education wants to support is that our students are continuing to grow over multiple years. So on the next slide, what I did is I tried to sort of articulate for you and show you some targeted data and just be really clear on the difference between the two. So in years past, we may have stood in front of you with achievement data, and you may have even seen achievement data of saying, oh, look at all our students who are at this level or at that level. The problem with achievement data and for us as an administrative group as well as for the Board of Education is achievement data is a one-time snapshot. It tells you on this day, this is the level that this child is at, period. Now, we can hope, obviously, that child the following year can go ahead and they can take the same assessment but a grade level later. The problem is that the achievement data only looks at that one year's performance and says, yay, this is how many kids we got at level three, and this is how many kids we got at level four. And you might be able to have a celebratory year, if you will. What we're interested in, though, is growth. We want to know that Johnny, who was on level three and grade four, went ahead and increased to level four and grade five and continued to hit his growth markers every year that he was a student with us. So that's the difference between what we're looking at. We feel that looking at growth is a better articulation of the quality of what students are achieving. So what you'll notice on the right-hand side is I showed you our grade four to eight students. So our grade four to eight students who completed the Smarter Balance Assessment in 2015 to 16, say, only 50.4% of those students reached the growth target that the State Department has identified for us. We want that at 100%. We don't want it at 50, okay? But one of the problems with the growth metrics that's been provided to us is you need trends over time in order to be able to use the growth metrics to make some good instructional decisions. So we, you need at least, you typically need three to five years under your belt before you can identify it as an actual targeted trend, which I am now communicating to you is a problem that we are looking to solve. So we are not okay with the percentages we see here. We wanna, we wanna lift those up. And the way we feel to do that is by having a job embedded coach that holds our general ed teachers accountable for quality math instruction and provides intervention to targeted students. So I'm gonna transition back over, I believe, to Kim. Jeff, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Amy.
Alrighty, hello again. And then, so our last request here is around paraprofessionals. So we have students with disabilities, obviously, in our district, and they transition between building to building as they age. And this relates mainly to our students in what we call the specialty program. So students with more intensive needs who may have communication devices, which means they're using like an iPad to communicate, which is a significant skill set to learn and teach and understand. They may have social behavioral difficulties and be followed by a behavior plan that travels with them in every environment as well as needing modified academic plans. And so the staff who work with them get some additional training and skills and obviously build rapport with the students, but also create the program that surrounds them. So when a student moves, say, from elementary to middle school, we are reluctant to send the exact same staff with them each time because then you dilute the capacity of the program in the building, you know, which is receiving new students from preschool. So we have a very consistent pipeline, if you will, of students moving from preschool to elementary, from elementary to middle, middle to high. So we are in a place for the upcoming school year where we have two specific students moving from the middle, from the elementary, no, I'm sorry, from the middle school to the high school, who are, have significant needs and will need individuals to follow along with them. However, there are students coming up from the elementary school who will need the individuals who are currently working with them. So we have a gap there, and so we need to add additional paraprofessionals to support those students when they move. We also have some elementary paraprofessionals supporting some of the more intensive students at that level in order to avoid hiring more staff. However, what we're doing is diluting the intervention and in-class support that we can give to general education students when we do that. So I'm trying to set sort of a normalization bar, if you will, and try to really staff the programs at the level where they need to be staffed rather than sort of taking one from another place and hoping that everything works out. Okay. And then we also are bringing back one student from an out-of-district placement who has been successful there, and he's coming back for high school. And he will need a one-to-one support in order to successfully do that. But we will, that'll be relatively budget-neutral because we'll save his transportation and tuition dollars and just invest those in a paraprofessional. So that comes to a total of needing six additional paraprofessionals for those students with disabilities. You know, we do have a really robust program in Eastline, and it's something I'm very proud of. I know, as a special education teacher, but former teacher, and it, we do a great job of keeping kids in district and supporting them in their local community and including them in their mainstream classes. And having the appropriate paraprofessional support really is one of the hallmarks that allows us to continue to do that. So that's what I have. So that's what I have on that. And I think I really hit on the data points there, Jeff, in my, as I was talking before, but this slide does kind of recap what I was talking about, where those gaps are coming into play related to asking for those six positions.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Kim.
Sure.
Very much. Let's just talk quickly about the additional elementary teachers that are also part of this list. We know, we've talked about, and many of you have heard us say that, you know, a lot of parents kept their students who were supposed to come to kindergarten this year, they kept them home this year. So we are concerned that we could have a high influx of kindergarten students coming to us next year, those that were kept home and the regular set of students that would typically come on any given year. So we're concerned about that. Man, it would push class sizes, you know, too high. So we have the solution of adding two kindergarten teachers into the mix, you know, for, for next year. Also, in grade two, and this is a cohort of students, they're currently in grade one. And in kindergarten, this started with, at Lilyby Haynes and Flanders, a large group of students, we, we did not add a teacher at the time when they were in kindergarten. We didn't do it in, in first grade. But we really need to support this, this cohort of students at Flanders and Lilyby Haynes to provide lower class sizes and the necessary supports. Because it's been, their classes will continue to be at the very top of the guidelines above others. And what's most important, I'll show you on the next slide, they are higher than where Nianic Center is, by about five students in a given class. So we are hoping to bring forward the two kindergarten teachers as well as the two grade two teachers. If we don't need the kindergarten teachers, for whatever reason, maybe we don't have that influx of K students, we're not going to hire one or two of them. So it's if, if, if we need them, we're anticipating, we don't want to get caught not doing it. And then now we have a, a gap in the budget for the following year. So if you look at class sizes, then, I know there's a lot of numbers in here. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at this, you know, off of the, you know, the slide deck that you received. But the, here's the class guidelines and you can see K to four. And they're the same for each of the three elementary schools. Projected 21, 22 enrollment at Nianic Center, Lilyby Haynes, you know, and Flanders, kindergarten, all to be determined. Now, projected enrollment with the homeschooling students that we know are out and that we anticipate will be returning. And we're working through the process of reaching out to them now to say, okay, are you coming back? You planning to come back? So that's, we're working through that. So with them returning, we have those numbers at each of those grade levels. Then the projected average class size. And I'll just bring your attention to grade two again, where I said Nianic Center is going to be at 15. Lilyby Haynes and Flanders are going to be at 20, almost 21 and 20 respectively. Hence, we wanted to add the additional two grade two teachers to put those at the same level as where Nianic Center is, at that 15, that 15 mark. This is a work in progress, as we know, especially with kindergarten, children come and go. So we continue to, to monitor this as we move forward. With that, just a little bit of information, quick on, on capital improvement. Chris Lund has done a phenomenal job putting together the capital improvement plan for next year, as well as looking out, you know, 10 years. He's just going to talk for a few minutes about some of those important items. Hope you had a chance to really look through those. It's a very comprehensive analysis of the, some of the issues that we've got going on as it pertains to capital. So Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you for a minute.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. In front of you is a pie chart of reduction of what I had planned for this coming year for our capital improvements. First thing you would note is that you will not see any of the elementary schools on here, taking into account the fact that we just completed some very significant renovations there. So it's time to turn our attention to the high school and the middle school. The high school, obviously, an older building made up of multiple wings. And we have some work there on the original 1967 to 69 wing, windows, doors. That really should be replaced. They no longer close properly. Security has changed. Windows are missing, et cetera, up until even more recent of the roofs and the air handling system. So 1998 was the last major work done at the high school, when they put the B-wing on. And that's all 20 years old now. And what we normally expect to get out of roof is 20 years. And what we usually expect for our mechanical systems before we have to start worrying about that is 20 years as well. So it's time to start doing some recapitalization of the equipment there. And very similarly with the middle school, you know, it's the, the newer school is now approaching middle age. It's 20 years and that equipment as well. And the roofs there are at the point where we need to reinvest some money into them now to extend their life. Some of what we're looking at is to do work on the roofs in particular, in particular, which will extend the life without having to tear off the entire roof, try to get another 10, 20 years out of them with an extension product and system at a much cheaper rate. So overall, I put together what I think is an effective and modest plan that will continue to keep us operating without any significant unexpected problems at a reasonable price.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it very much. Just a couple more slides to go, and these are all really focused around the ESRT2 and the ARP funding. So these are our newer slides. We shared these with our Board of Education. So first off, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So ESRT2, two pots of money, this one, 772,000. We are in the process right now of uploading information into the state site as it pertains to this, this funding. So we can begin to capture the dollars and start, begin to draw down. We'll talk about, you know, what we're looking to potentially draw down for. But I'll just turn your attention to the priorities. This has specific criteria and priorities that we need to adhere to as we reach to draw down from, from these funds. Academic supports, you know, the learning loss, recovery, those, those types of things. Everything we've kind of talked about, you know, back, you know, at the beginning of the presentation. Family and community connections, school safety, so some facilities, potential facilities work. Yes, CL side of things, social and emotional components. And then, you know, that, that continue to capitalize on that digital divide and making improvements there. Hence, you'll, you'll see our need to provide internet access for over 30 families. We have 39 families that we're providing internet access for this year. That's going to continue as we move into, into next year. So when you talk about that $772,000, this is a estimate of how we're working to break down that money and what we're, we're thinking about it for. The main and biggest one is this two-year summer instructional pathway. Not summer school, but a summer instructional pathway where we're providing supports cohorts of students that we identify that really need extra assistance through the summer to help prepare, you know, for next year, for this summer, as well as the following summer after that. So $150,000, you know, per summer with the staffing and the projected costs for that. And that's already underway to get that, that ready to support our students this summer. We have some professional development funding, some reading training, Wilson reading training for staff, about, you know, 30 to 40 staff members at the elementary level there. Additional, some additional elementary psychologist support, just bumping our current point eights up to point, to 1.0. So we're adding a point two to each of them, looking at that for next year. You saw those numbers that Kim shared on the social worker piece and the high school social worker slide. You said there's 53 crisis incidents for high schools, 56 crisis incidents for the middle school. Hence, we're looking at putting in a one-year middle school social worker position to support students. And we've already looked and identified some cohorts of students at the middle school requiring services. We have benefits for that component, the home internet access that I just talked about, as well as the facility side of things. You know, Chris just mentioned, you know, the elementary schools, great shape. We have, we appreciate all the effort in putting all that together and getting those done. Middle school and high school duct work is something that hasn't been touched in many years. And honestly, not in my time in district, nor Chris's, obviously. So we're looking to clean duct work, at duct work at the middle and the high school level to improve air quality. Not that it's bad, there's nothing wrong with it right now, but this is an opportunity for us to utilize these funds as they are one, under one of the priorities that they outlined, to do some duct work cleaning. So that's the ESRT2 funds, 772,000. None of that touches next year's operating budget. Just want to be clear with that. Let's talk about the next pot of money, which is the American Rescue Plan. Okay, almost could call it ESRT3. Now, we are, we've been told we're slated to get 1.9 million as the town is slated to get about 1.7 million from, from what we've, we've heard. This is not finalized yet. We've not been given any further information as to how we are going to approach these dollars or what the system will be, if it will be like ESRT2, with having to develop goals and supports and outline strategies as to how we're going to use the money. But you could see, what we do know, 20% of the grant is reserved to address learning loss and that 80% can be expended on, on other areas, as, you know, I'll let you read, or you already might have read. So when you talk about ARP, we've got some thoughts and ideas for that money. And these are all preliminary. What has to happen is we need to talk with the, our subcommittee of the board, our Finance Facilities and Operations Committee, as well as the full Board of Education, to begin to decide on allocation of these funds. Some ideas, some thoughts. One in particular, if we're going to get 1.9 million, we should not be coming to the town for a special appropriation of $500,000 for this current year because we have an operating budget deficit due to COVID. The American Rescue Plan should fund that. So we would not come to the town for that appropriation if we get these, these dollars. That would be our, one of our intended plans. Operating budget for next year, I think we've just talked about with a 3.79% increase, we would offset that by potentially 431,000, almost $432,000. Board of Ed and FFO, we're going to be looking at that. I'll just break that down a little bit for you in just a minute. So you put those two together and subtract them from the 1.9 million, you're left with 968,000. So we'll talk about that number in, in just a second as well. So the 431, here's how we're estimating potentially to, to break that down. And this is where we need to continue to dive into, looking at cohorts, looking at data and going into next year to see where our gaps are, as to where supports would be. And offsetting the, the current operating budget. So here's where the two kindergarten teachers that we referenced, the two second-grade teachers that I referenced, both of those, we would take out of the operating budget cost and use the rescue plan funds to cover the expenses of those and the benefits. And in addition, the paraprofessionals that Kim talked about, the six paraprofessionals, we would look to potentially fund those as well under the American Rescue Plan funds if they come to fruition, which we think they're, they're going to. So this is an estimated number. This has to be worked through with the Board of Ed and worked through with all of you, with the Board of Finance. Hopefully, we can collaborate on that. And if we did that, and just looking at 431,000 or almost 432, it potentially would drop our 3.79% increase down to 2.95% increase over the current fiscal year. So just to give you a snapshot of what that, that would do. Lastly, that remaining money, so 500,000 is out, the 460 or 431 is out. We're left with 968. How might we further break that down? And these are very preliminary and, and all estimated items that need to be talked about with FFO and with our Board of Education. But these are things we're looking at as we're starting to see where the supports are needed. Technology, tech teachers, we have them at the middle school, we have them at the high school, we don't have them at the elementary level. All kids have devices now. So they're utilizing those devices and we're expecting them to utilize those devices. And we're relying on the teachers who are learning too, to provide all of that support. So we're under the premise that, you know what, it might be a good idea to look at potentially bringing in some technology teacher support, where it would be almost be a special, where students would go to engage in technology learning. A pathways and 504 coordinator. So we have a high number of 504 students that require supports. That number has grown. We need some, some oversight, some administrative oversight there to, to help focus on that. In addition to pathways or internships, our Coastal Connections Program that we have downstairs here at Central Office, those students lost, all we had about, we have about 20 students roughly in that program. They lost all of their internships this year. They would be going off, out, out into job sites and working in the community. We lost all of those. We need to rebuild all of those, those opportunities for kids. We also want to do more of that at the high school level and identifying students who are not going on to college, are going into trades and start to begin to build pathways and careers and focus more on that. So that would be that element that we're going to be talking with the board about. Adding at Lilyby Haynes because we're seeing an influx of students that are requiring services under ABA or autism, the addition of some additional school psychologist support specific to that specialty area and working, you know, with, with those, those students directly. And then lastly, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support intervention teachers, two of them at, at the high school. So this is that group of kids at the high school that, you know, they're not identified still under special education. But they could be going to a study hall that, we could call it a study hall, or we might call it, you know, something else where they're provided and given direct support and instruction to improve their grades and another intervention of sorts for, for our high school kids. We have a number of them that are requiring support and these two teachers can be the ones that could do it. We have a piecemealed support system in place right now that just is, is not cutting it. It's not going to cut it for next year. So again, these are all preliminary. We're going to be working through the Board of Ed, our FFO committee, as well as, you know, all of you, if you'd like to join us in those conversations. And with that, well, thank you for, you know, your ongoing support and everything you continue to do for our town. And I'll stop sharing and turn it over for any specific questions that anybody might have. And Mariana's here, our team is here. We can jump into anything else as well.
Thank you, Jeff. That was, that was really an excellent synopsis of the budget book that we received earlier. I think it clearly spells out the direction that you guys want to go in. Many of us have seen this now a couple of times. Having said that, I'm sure there's still a lot of questions, you know, from our folks that might have delved into the detail a little bit. But again, thanks, you know, for that detailed presentation, Kimberly and Jeff and Mariana and Amy. A great job. With that, I am going to open it up to questions from our board members. So who would like to go first this evening? If there are any questions.
We're okay if you don't have any questions, too.
Well, you know, I'm always going to have a question or two. So I'm just trying to be polite here.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll, I'll start. I, I've kind of, I listened to it a few different times, your, your presentation. The first thing I was going to ask is those last few slides, is there a way we could get those? Because I don't think I was ever given those last few slides. I don't know if those were new.
The, the ARP, yeah, those are the new slides we, we went over with the Board of Education. They should have been in the packet that came this morning.
No, I printed everything down. I don't, I don't have any of that, the last part.
Last few slides, okay.
I'll, I'll send it over again and I'm, I'm looking at it now. I, I have all the pages that were referenced this evening. And Tantara, see, you're shaking your head. Yes, you have all the pages as well.
Okay.
The one you sent me.
I did get them, including the last.
All right, so just if you can restand it, that'd be great. Okay. So I'm just going to kind of start. I just want to make sure I'm correct. For fixed expenses, I have, you have 97.2% of the budget is fixed expenses. Is that correct? I'm not sure who I'm speaking to, but who can field the question.
That is, that is correct. Exactly. I'll show you a fixed expense slide here. We have some additional, additional slides. Some of these, we, we left off, we just thought we had too many slides and many of you had seen these. So you can see 97.2% is the fixed expenses.
Okay, that's employee benefits, salaries.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Let me see, where am I? You were saying the kids are all back in school, which I think is excellent. I'm very excited. I've talked to, you know, some parents and I think everybody's excited to have them back in. I, I guess my question is, after listening to the, you know, Board of Ed meeting the other night, is how does that look in the classroom with the kids with the devices? Because I know they've been, you know, sitting in front of the device. So do they like shut the device down and listen to like, you know, the teacher just teach to them in the kind of old style of teaching and then kind of open the device back up? Or are they kind of on the device through the whole entire class again?
You know, Amy just shared with me, Amy, go ahead. I know you, when you're, you're thinking the same thing I'm thinking. She was just in some classes. We were just talking about this the other day.
Yeah, so I did, I did, just did a five-building dipstick on Tuesday of day two of the five-day to see. Because I wanted, I wanted to ask myself and see for myself the same thing. What does that look like? What are we seeing? So I had visited upwards of, well, actually, I was in 15 different classrooms. And out of the 15 classrooms, nine of the classrooms had And out of the 15 classrooms, nine of the classrooms had devices open with students on them. And the commonality between how the devices is being used was two things. One was for peer-to-peer interaction. So whether it was a game-based learning experience, it was an opportunity, like I saw an ELA class where peers were editing each other's written work in a Google Classroom document, rather than maybe doing it on handwritten paper. I was in an elementary classroom where it was a station, and the iPads were up, and they were practicing with software. But our expectation, just to be clear, is it's a 50/50 model. So however long that you have the instructional block with the students, that device is only to be on or engaged as part of the instructional model for 50% of the time. And that's our, that's our expectation, because one thing we've done very well here in Eastline is the teacher-to-student discourse and authentic learning as well. So the tech is meant to be embedded throughout and intentional.
Thank you. So you're talking about the math coaches, and I guess this is for grades three through eight, and I guess my concern is, at this point, is a ma- is a math coach, how do I explain this? Let me kind of think about this for a minute. Is it better to figure out where the, like, gap is before you start hiring math coaches to try to fill in the gap? I don't know if I'm making sense. Because right now, you've got the kids who had COVID. So even if you had children or students who were falling behind, now you've got COVID, so it's, it's, it's not really going to be an accurate assessment of where they are, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, so that's the importance of the trend data and multiple years to show us what is a trend. And yes, we can have a blip because of the pandemic for a one year, but we already know identified areas that we need coaching for our teachers and intervention for our students. Because what we do is, we benchmark all of our elementary and middle school students three times a year. So three times a year, we are measuring our students, and through those measurements, we're able to track and identify areas of improvement that even if we weren't to give the standardized assessment in the spring, we can, we can tell you now areas and targeted grade levels that we know need some mathematics support. So.
Now, is that something that could be covered? Like you said, there was something that you were doing with reading with a Wilson, like, training? Is that something you could do with training versus hiring, like, math coaches? Do you know what I mean? So maybe you would train the teachers versus having them, you know, hiring full-time math coaches?
Yeah, so what's interesting about the state, and sort of where the state is, I feel like math is like a couple of years behind ELA always with their development. There has been, you know, in the state of Connecticut, there's a huge, a lot of dyslexia legislation that is at the forefront, that is really pushing some really good certified literacy training. And that is not the case for mathematics. So, and then the other piece of it is, I think, the highest level of professional learning that we actually have proof of working is ongoing job-embedded accountability professional learning. So that's one of the pieces, like even within Wilson training, you are with, you are being trained for an entire year. So in lieu of there not really being a math version of Wilson, if you will, this is our approach of consistent, ongoing PD for our teachers. It's not a one-and-done. It's consistent on a monthly basis as part of their teaching and learning cycle as they talk about students.
So that, that leads me to my next question. So the math coach, is it for, like, each, the teachers, like, in, all the teachers get together in a certain grade, and then the math coach would teach them how to teach the children? Is, is that how it works?
Yeah, so what we do is, we do a 70, our coaches are defined by a 70/30 model. 30% of their time, they are servicing the highest needs students in regards to mathematics. 70% of the time, they are either conducting model lessons in a classroom, offering target feedback to our general ed teachers, and observing them do a math lesson, and, and giving them feedback on what research says is more effective practices. Or third, they are in weekly grade-level meetings with all grade levels, looking at student data, talking to teachers around their practice, and setting targeted plans with those teachers, and then beefing up and supplying PD for teachers based on the student data from their classroom. And that's a monthly cycle.
Now, right now, do you have any math coaches?
One.
And which, I'm sorry, where was that math coach located?
She is across all three elementary schools.
Okay. Okay, got it. Let's see. Oh, so are the kids in the high school, are they still doing the three lunch waves? Are they going to continue that? So you would need the, the lunch monitors still?
They, they are doing the three lunch waves currently right now. We don't know if it's going to remain three. It could go to two. We know pretty much for sure it's not going to go back to, to one full lunch wave again. So to be determined as to what supports we might, we might need. But right now, we have it working fairly well.
Now, are the lunch monitor, are those like full-time employees, or is this just as you, as you need them?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
And oftentimes, too, you have teachers that are doing duties at the high school. They're covering a lot of those lunch times as well. But there is a greater need right now, because you have two lunch areas. The whole south gym is filled with 80 tables and chairs right now for lunch every day. And then you have a whole commons area as well to accommodate the, the three lunch waves and sitting six feet apart.
Okay. Okay, next question. It's more of a definition, social and emotional learning. I have, I have a question. What does that mean exactly?
Kim, you wanted to give kind of a snapshot of SEL.
Sure, sure. Social and emotional learning is a set of skills that, you know, a lot of people develop sort of discreetly, or maybe not so much, but they revolve around five buckets, around self-awareness, self-regulation, decision-making skills. Oh my goodness, I'm blanking on the two, but there are five, there's five buckets. And they're governed by a set of standards called the Castle Competencies, which is a collaborative that is a professional resource. It's sort of the go-to professional organization that governs really the teaching of social emotional skills. So for example, when you are working collaboratively with someone else, being able to listen to their ideas, hear that, mesh it with your own ideas, and then navigate the conversation to continue working successfully together. Those are discrete, like problem-solving skills that you have to use when you're in a, you know, a relationship on a joint project with another student. Self-regulation and goal-setting skills such as, okay, I know that I have three things for homework, two of them are due tomorrow, and one of them is due, you know, on Thursday. So I'm going to do the things that are due tomorrow, because, you know, I, even though I like the thing on Thursday better, right? And so being able to set goals, take personal responsibilities for your actions. There's lots of subset skills to that, but that's sort of some examples. And we, we hear a lot right now around social and emotional learning, and also related to mental health. They are two separate and distinct things, but they do go hand-in-hand. Because, you know, if you don't have good social skills and you're not regulating yourself well, you're probably demonstrating some maladaptive behaviors that make you less attractive as a friend or a coworker. And that could be due to some underlying mental health conditions like depression, anxiety, you know, or, you know, social anxiety, or it could just be that you have some skills that have yet to develop. And so we want to work with teachers to teach them to be comfortable in these discrete skills of instruction for, for all of our students. So it's really a general education thing that all students can benefit from. And we want teachers to be the facilitators of that instruction, but it's not in the area they've had a lot of training or professional development as of yet. And so we're looking to strengthen that, you know, in the upcoming school year.
And that's for the general population?
Yeah, that's for everybody. Yeah, it's not a special education initiative. It's something that every student needs. And we have those standards that I mentioned from the Castle organization, go K through 12. I mean, so it's not just something you do in elementary school. It's something you continue to refine all through your school career.
And this, and just to add, this year really has been so problematic, especially for those students that don't have those skills, because they've been home now, isolated. And they haven't come, or they've been remote, and have remained remote, often because of anxiety. So being able to, to support and tap into those individuals, get them back into the mainstream, help build those social skills again, is, is vitally important.
Okay, that, that kind of segues into my, my next point. And this is something I've been kind of thinking about all day, actually. So when it comes to the mental health, right, you, you want to have social workers and, I forgot who else you said. Social worker and fill me in, who else was there for that?
And the ARP possibility is a, is a school psychologist.
Okay, so this is my concern. So I guess my first question is, are these, like, social workers and are they just identifying children who have an issue? Or what, what, what are they actually, what do they actually do?
Sure.
Purpose?
Yeah, the essential role of a social worker is to provide mental health supports and a connection with families and outside community providers, so that school is not the only place where a student is potentially receiving support around mental health. They are trained counseling clinicians, but they have a school-based, you know, certification. So they, they can help with the implementation of the SEL practices that, that are, you know, for everyone. They can work with kids, you know, so our adolescents experience what's called a partial hospitalization, where so say they may have had a suicidal ideation, they go to the emergency room, they're evaluated, they may not be kept overnight. They are, you know, released back to their parents' care, and then they spend a six to eight weeks in what's called a partial hospitalization program. They shorten their school day, and they go to an intensive counseling program. When that ends in six to eight weeks, then we still have school-based people who can help touch base with the student, you know, check in with them at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, provide once a week counseling, if that's appropriate. Just be there to be a connection between those outside services and what's available in schools. And, you know, we've seen a lot of kids, you know, in our middle school and high school years, having these sorts of issues around, you know, manifesting from anxiety and depression. And, you know, we want to really be able to support that. The school psychologist is slightly different, because they do testing for special education, as well as a counseling component. But they're not as, quite as clinical, if you will, as the social work training. And then we have guidance counselors as well, or school counselors in our middle school and high school. You know, their focus is around academic planning, academic goal-setting. They do, you know, check in, of course, with kids and support their needs and help them through situations like divorce or a death in the family. But that social work just has a, a different layer of mental health training that the other two providers don't. So they, they kind of dip their toe in the water of counseling supports where this, and, and do other things for the school community, where the social worker is really just based in that counseling and that clinical support. They don't diagnose kids at school. We, we don't do that. They're, you know. So hopefully, that kind of helps articulate that.
I guess, I guess my question, this is my concern, actually. So I, my, my idea is, if, if you're, you identify, and then when you identify, do you contact the parents? Or you have them contact the pediatrician, and then, okay. Because I've been thinking about this all day, and I was concerned that we'd be opening ourselves up to liability. Like, if we start taking on, you know, I mean, if something happens to a child, you know, the parent's going to say, well, I'll sue. I mean, you know, I'm a lawyer, so that, this, this is the way my mind thinks. So I read this, and I was like, kind of in a panic going, I, you know, I don't want to see, you know, Eastline be responsible for, you know, some kind of, you know, death of a child. Do you know what I mean? So I don't want to get Eastline, and it's, it's, you know, it's a real concern. I've actually been worrying about this thing. So immersed that we leave ourselves open for liability. So that's, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's really it. So we're not doing, like, ongoing, like, therapy with the students? I mean, there's, it's, it, it gets directed outside.
Yeah, it's, it's counseling in school. So any school-based provider, whether you're a speech pathologist, a social worker, a, an occupational therapist, you're not meant to replace an outside service. Your role is to support the child in being able to function in the educational environment. So if your, you know, anxiety is such that you're, you know, frequently requesting to leave the classroom, say, and go to the nurse, you know, then you're missing instruction. And so you're not getting the full benefit of your academic environment. So that's where, you know, the clinic, the school social workers in, in the school-based environment can work with a student. What are your triggers? What can you do? What coping strategies can we identify that are successful for you? They definitely are not taking the place of outside counseling, and, and they're keenly aware of good parent communication, and, you know, connecting the parents to an outside resource that can manage that component of it, for sure.
Good, okay. That, that was really a big concern of mine today.
Sure. And they ask parental permission before they, you know, engage in an ongoing relationship with a student. So parents are always aware. Yep.
Great. Okay, so another question I had on paraprofessionals, and I'm sorry, I'm almost done. Are, are the paraprofessionals, are they required by law? Like, do you have to have a one-on-one with, like, a special needs student? Is there some requirement, you know?
So, yeah, so every student in, who has served through special education has a plan, which is called an individualized education plan. And so when the plan is developed, there's a team of professionals and the parents come together and talk about the strengths, the weaknesses, and the profile of the student. And so if there is a need for a paraprofessional, it gets hashed out, if you will, at those meetings. And once it's in an IEP, then yes, it's a legal requirement that we have to fulfill.
Okay, and that, is that the 504 you're talking about?
No, 504s are different. They're for general education students, and they generally don't come with services. They come with accommodations, like extra time, or, you know, the ability to leave class or have a snack at any time, things like that, that are more related to medical conditions. But special education is servicing students with an IEP, which is specialized in direct instruction. So it, it tends to be different from the classroom instruction that's currently happening.
Got it. Okay, so one other question on the paraprofessionals. You're, you said the paraprofessionals, just for clarification, if you had somebody moving to, from the elementary to the middle school, does the same paraprofessional go with that student? Or do you have a new paraprofessional at the next school? I guess I was kind of trying to understand what you were saying there.
Sure. So for example, we have a, we have two classrooms at the elementary school that serve students with significant needs who have autism spectrum disorders. And so we spend a lot of time and energy with the teacher and the paraprof- instructional strategies, behavior management strategies, communication strategies, to help them be successful, both while they're in the special ed room and when they're in their inclusion environment. And so those paraprofessionals know the elementary level skills and needs of students. And so when the student goes to middle school, we try not to send the elementary person with them, because the elementary person is invested at the elementary level, right? And so sometimes temporarily, we will send a person, because they know the student best, and it will help the student transition. But then we very quickly sort of exit that person and get the child transitioned to a new middle school provider. We have that same program at the middle school. So there are middle, there's a middle school program for autism. And so kids can, you know, they, they transition to that program. There are providers there to support them. Sometimes we have an imbalance, and we end up with too many kids on, you know, in one level. And so then we do need to either, and we do transfer pairs from one level to another if we can. This year, we have a balance coming in from preschool, so that we cannot send people on to the middle school with those students, because we need them, because we're getting more kids in on the other side.
Okay, got it. All right. I don't have any other questions right now, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Does any of our other board members have questions for the Board of Education members?
No, next, because a lot of my questions are connected to what Anne was talking about, so.
Is that okay, Rich? I saw you had your hand up. Is, is it okay if Peter goes next?
Yeah, Peter can go next. That's great. And Anne Santoro or John want to go ahead with me, that's fine, too.
Okay. All right, Peter, your questions.
Anne, Anne was kind of on the same line of questioning that I had. So Kimberly, you're going to continue to be on the spot here. And just for, for transparency, you're speaking my language with the social, social worker language, so I understand. Understand that. So I had a couple of questions. And by the way, Anne, social workers don't get sued, doctors get sued. Okay, our, our malpractice rates are much, much lower than doctors.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Adding 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 social workers um is is positive and. Um but my question about the social worker, I I was I was trying to follow it. Um the time split between the the the. For lack of a better word, the special ed classroom, the the the.
The therapeutic program.
Yeah, the yeah, the diversionary program, yeah. Uh I I understood from what the the way I heard it was that the social worker split between. The therapeutic program and a mainstream population. By how, what's what's the ratio?
Currently, so the goal is to have the social worker with the the therapeutic program with fifty percent of their time.
Fifty percent, okay.
Yeah, right. And so right now at the high school, we have one full-time social worker and that's that's what she does. It's fifty percent of her time. With the therapeutic program and fifty percent of her time for anybody else in the building, you know, who needs services.
So you'd have the equivalent of a a full-time equivalent in the therapeutic program. Shared between two people?
No, we have just one person.
Right now is.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
If you got the second social worker, you'd have two social workers fifty percent of their time?
No, the second social worker. So in theory, we would keep the current social worker with the therapeutic program fifty percent of her day. And then fifty percent with the with the mainstream, if you will, the rest of the high school. The new person would be wholly devoted to the high school. So we're not, we're not adding anything to that specialty program. We're trying to beef up what we can add to the offer to the high school in general.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Understand the. Therapeutic program in terms of keeping kids in district. Um and that I I I wanted some clarification. You talked about one student that was coming back. From being placed out and the. Offset was hiring a one-on-one. And that would be the same price as sending a kid out? I thought that would be cheaper.
Oh, no, it's much cheaper. Yes, we're we're saving money. I'm sorry, I did. I didn't say that well then. No, we're saving lots of money.
Put a kid on one-on-one is cheaper than sending a kid out of district.
Oh, yeah. So the current tuition for that student is um about ninety-six thousand to a hundred and six thousand dollars. Um and the transportation is in addition to that, so probably another forty thousand dollars for transportation. And then.
Offset, okay.
Yeah, and hiring the para would be, I I forget Mariana.
I think you said the tr- so that makes sense. The transportation cost may off would be the wash.
Sure, sure. And it would even be a little in the.
Just to just to throw it out there, too, just you might have said it before, didn't say it tonight, but with our outplacements, we have some significantly lower outplace. Student numbers than most other districts in our size. Um Kim, I think we're, last I knew, we were around thirteen, fourteen students.
Uh, no, I don't think we're that high. I think we're t- eleven, I wanna say. Yeah, I need to recount.
Other districts our size would have well over twenty students. Yells having supports in district, but it's the least restricted environment for kids and that's just most.
I I support beefing up the in-house and keeping the kids in placement. I can't say that too loud, but I I understand that. The other question and kind of piggybacking on what Anne was talking about with the math coach. Um I believe, I don't know, Camille, you're the historian here, but I believe I was on the Board of Finance when the concept of a math coach was first. Roached with us and was met with some kind of. Maybe not welcoming arms because it was, it sounded. I don't know. I don't know what the word is, but. So it's a hard sell, okay? At least in my opinion. So is there data that supports? The math coach in the way that you describe it. That shows a connection between the progress that the student body makes as a whole, I think is what you're trying to. Show us and that it's in the math coach being the being the um. Being the um. Major cause of that or resulting in that. I because. I I didn't hear that there was a direct connection. I understood that math is 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 a problem area and you need to beef it up and a math coach is a solution to it. I'm just wondering if there's a if if there's research that shows that connection.
Yeah, so there's there's research behind uh instructional coaching. Being the highest level of effective sort of professional learning method, if you will, for teachers. I think for us, the student data point that we've been using is our growth trends over time. Um and the fact that we should be having a hundred percent of our students meet their growth targets. And we are currently right now averaging anywhere between forty-five to fifty percent. And that for us is data that we've been using, that we've been looking at over four years. But you're right, we've uh three years? I want to say we've talked about math coaches. I think maybe four. I mean. A four, okay, thank you, Tim. So uh for us. Let me talk to you about the effectiveness though. So we have. Literacy coaches at the three elementary schools and at the middle school. And we have proven data to note their effectiveness and moving our students along in the intervention model. And closing achievement gaps. So that's data that I could certainly. Uh relate to the onset of the literacy coaches and then the trend data of our literacy data over time. We have that to verify that that works. So to us, mo- sort of mocking that model, if you will, for mathematics, since it's been had a proven result and continues to have a proven result. Is is sort of the trend, I guess you can say for us.
Because that's the it's it's a hard sell. That's so that's I'm trying to, that that would be a way to sell it. And and support it. And that's kind of what I was looking for. Think that's all I have for now. I'm going to reserve the ability to come back, but that's what I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Um next up, Anne Santoro. Would you like to go next?
Sure, that's fine. Camille, thanks. Um just want to start out. Um by saying um very good detail in um the budget book, the slide presentation. Um especially the capital improvement plan um from Chris Lund. Um, you know, much appreciated. It reduces the number of questions, um you know, and. Although we'll always have questions because you, you know, you cover vast territories of information. And services, so it's impossible not to have some questions and, you know, we need to be um. You know, tuned in to the language of your, uh, you know, of your services as well as many times. But in any event, um. I'm going to kind of start where Peter ended. Um not so much about the math coach per se, but. About um American Rescue Plan. So um. Uh, the point was raised about the the role of the um uh. The math coaches and um that the coach is helping to uh bring the students up to up to par. But I would imagine, I'm going to guess that because of the past year. And um that maybe there's been even additional slippage. I'm just gonna throw that out there. I. Know you haven't made that assessment yet from what Jeff said at the beginning of our presentation tonight. But um I'm, you know, thinking along the lines of. How best we can use the American Rescue Plan. It's a. Of an enormous piece of legislation. It covers so many things. Um, I did go to the act to um look at the section that concerns. Schools and the use of the funding and um happily for schools compared to municipalities and. And uh and uh governments in general, like county governments, there's a lot of detail. And in that detail, um it seemed to me a lot of things can be covered. So I'm thinking about Chris Lund's. Um capital improvement plan, you know, I'm thinking about uh. You know, math coach similar to maybe some of the other sort of temporary. Or limited time hires that you might have, where there might be a math coach, um. You know, uh to help not only with the previous deficiencies, but deficiencies because of COVID. I mean, um but uh so I just wanted to point that out and um. I printed out for myself today, but I can, I it's something I can pass on to the rest of the board and. Section two thousand and one, sort of easy to remember because it's, I guess, a memorable year in American history, right, uh nine eleven. But um. That section um. Goes over the many categories, even even to the point of telling us that we can replace windows and doors. To help with air, uh clean air in the schools because of pandemic, et cetera. So um. Very impressive that that's pretty specific. Um so that brings me to my to my question, basically, so in. We'll we'll have to have some sort of a timeframe by which Jeff and and Tim and the board and Chris and everybody else um refines. Uh, your thinking in the last pages of your of your presentation as to where you'll allocate these funds. Um so so a timetable in that regard would be really helpful. I mean, it has to be sometime before our board deliberates, I I assume. Um but in that regard, um so where is your source of information to guide you? Uh legally, correctly, properly. I know on the town side, you know, it's a, it's multifaceted because. On the town side, we're dealing with four general categories under the act and Treasury Department still has to promulgate regulations. So that's going to take some time. You you seem to have more detail and 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 because so much of what's happened to you. Is so COVID-related. So that's a, that's a, you know, a a good thing for for the use of the money, uh use of the funding. But so I um, I mean, is it something where you're 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 uh given direction from um. State Department of Education, um your legal counsel, Mariana, you know, certainly has looked at all this.
Yeah, the C S D, that's where we get um our information from. Same thing happened with S R two funds. We worked right with the state department. We've done webinars with them. On the funding. Um and now the next step process with A R P is coming all funneled through uh the State Department of Education.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to. Throw that out there as, you know, because you did mention that you wanted to confer again or whatever, but just from a. And, you know, this is not my studying this in any great detail, but just. Plucking out the relevant portions of that statute. It's an enormous statute, but. Once you go to the table of contents, it's pretty pretty easy to pluck out what you need. But um I have a few questions um. About, actually, so so ba- actually, back to that, I'll just finish up by saying, um, under Chris's uh. Capital Improvement Plan drafted, um, you know. Even that five hundred thousand dollars of the of technology. I mean, to me. That's like clearly fitting within the parameters of the act, you know, plus maybe the H V A C. Needs. So those are some other things to maybe uh be thinking about. So I just had a couple of questions. Going back to the um budget booklet and some of the object codes. And just a couple of those things. Um so. And I think these are not necessary in any order. I'm just sort of um. So uh let's see. Item five to uh object code five ten, which is. Transportation. There's a, you know, a considerable increase uh proposed for that. Over a hundred thousand dollars. And I guess it sounds like it's contractual. So so Jeff, where are we with that contract and what is the rationale given by the company for this? Is it, you know, gas price going up?
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, I think it was two years ago, we had reduced and cut two buses. He's, we in turn have had to add those buses back. It was a nightmare. Um it it didn't work out the way that we were hoping that it would work out. Uh so and Mariana, you might be able to explain a little bit more because I knew you had to reconfigure to get that one back in.
Right, so so part of it is adding um the the bus and then the other part is um it's roughly. Not a big increase, but we're in the last twenty-one, twenty-two is the last year of our transportation contract, Anne. There's roughly, um I I believe it's like two and a half or a three percent increase. So it's not. Uh I think it's two and a half in in the final year. So it is not, um. It's not a big increase, but it's it's those two reasons.
Okay, okay. And then I guess, you know, as as uh. As that ends and and you're into the future, you can certainly, yeah, shop around if need be, I guess, right? Okay.
One of our plans with that, Anne, we ti- we did a three-year contract with our busing company because in Waterford did. It was on a five-year plan. So we actually, we just set up a meeting for May. We're getting together with Waterford because we're looking to potentially join forces. To put put out a bid for both districts for busing services to see.
That'd be great. You know, I'm sure it'd be an efficiency there, you know, that's that's great. Um. Um, I looked at the, uh, yeah, the after this, this, I'm still in that section on summary by object code. And if we go um past it and there's a little section on the integrated preschool. So what's happening there that we have that increase? Um are these. Paraprofessionals that we've referred to previously, are these different? And then is there some other teacher there? So. I couldn't quite connect the dots on that one.
So the the fifty-six thousand dollar increase you see, Anne, is fifty-five thousand of that increases the additional quota that we're proposing. And then the other one is a a, you know, a cost of living adjustment for the other person that's in there. That's a slight difference. So fifty-five thousand makes up that bulk of a difference. Thousand is um represents uh contractual increases for the paraprofessional and it's roughly one other paraprofessional.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, and then um, let's see. Textbooks under six forty-one, we'll go back to that. I just saw a little jump there. Um, this is at the high school level, I guess, primarily some at the elementary level. Uh but at the high school level, are those books that have just at this point dog-eared or missing or?
Yeah, so um basically, some of the textbooks are upwards of fifteen. To, in one case, twenty years old. We only purchase, so you know, we only purchase class sets. So we do not purchase a textbook per student. So even though a science teacher might have three course, three uh variations of a course. And they might have a hundred students, they only purchase a class set of twenty-six. And that's a cost-saving practice that we do. And then we also always look at e versions of books. For students as well. So in most cases, when our student, when our teacher's by the class set, we also get e licenses as well. The students can also have it electronically. But it just so happens their science department at the high school have have. Uh multiple courses at the same time or in need of a renewal of a primary report.
I see. Okay, that's fine. I mean, that's important. We have to cover our our topics, you know, here. Um, hang on, I've got a couple based on. On presentation today. The math coach that does exist uh with the, that's working at the elementary school level. Uh and there is not no math coach at the middle school, so that tho- those services have never been used by the middle school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so um, I'm assuming that. Um, when we see as um uh some of the additional uh staff required, whether it's. Paraprofessionals uh or social worker, whatever, that we're talking about. Um and we're using some of the the funds from S R two or uh the American Rescue Plan. That these will be of limited duration, I guess. Um is that the the concept? It it's not. That we're beginning this and then this is into perpetuity. You know, if we're, because obviously it's funded from another source, not taxpayer uh Eastline-directed taxpayer dollar.
That that's correct, yes. Yep.
Okay, well, that's what I have for now. I I know there will be more, just, you know, but uh. Yeah, I did. I just wanted to point out the the provisions of the act because I was um. You know, uh impressed with the level of detail of it. So that's to your advantage and that you, you know. You don't have to wait on uh too much more direction perhaps. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Um. Rich, are you ready for your questions?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, starting with slide thirteen, the major budgetary requests and needs. It's mentioned about a a full-time social worker for the high school. I'm wondering. Do we have a require, do we have a need for the elementary students as well? Because that always sounded like the elementary students were the ones that. Really needed the socialization more than anybody else and they were prioritized to get back to school. On a more regular basis ahead of the. On a more regular basis ahead of the older students. Are, are there any plans for social workers at that level?
Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, just when you can add in, Kim, I mean, we didn't necessarily plan for social workers. This would be increased a little bit of a psychologist. Time in, in support at that level. Um, that could be a need, Rich, that we identify, you know, as, as we move forward towards into this year. And potentially the, you know, the beginning of, of next year, but based on the numbers, you know, each of the schools. Um, and Kim, I'll let you chime in, you know, because we have had discussion all of the social workers at the elementary level.
Right, so we currently have one social worker that covers the three elementary schools. And remember, the high school social worker that's in our major budgetary request is something that was a pre-COVID. Plan. We're still finishing an initiative to, to staff the high school. So. Um, but in relation now to the response with the pandemic, we have been talking about. You know, what, what needs are out there socially and emotionally. And ultimately, we landed on increasing the school psychologist time at the elementary school because the little ones are less. Able to engage in, um, a therapeutic conversation. They're learning skills. Um, which is where the S E L professional development comes in. And, um, school psychologists can lead the, you know, be critical leaders of that, um, initiative as well as a social worker could be. And plus, the school psychologist can also provide the evaluation measures to, you know, potentially identify students who may have. Disabilities. And so at the elementary level, we tend to find more students, you know, the, for. And we call it initial evaluation, who may be struggling and may need that evaluation. So rather than at the high school. So we just felt, um, at least in this preliminary recommendation, that to support those needs that you're talking about for. The younger students, a school psychologist would be a better match for the role, um, than an additional social worker.
So is that a shifting of resources from one level to the elementary? Or is it stretching the school psychologist's caseload higher?
No, so if we use the American Rescue dollars, we would be adding a social, um, excuse me, a school psychologist. To the specialty programs and preschool. So one person, a full-time one point O would cover those programs. And we were, um, we've made a proposal around increasing the current school psychologists at each elementary to a one point O. Each elementary currently has a point eight school psychologist and then they all have. So for instance, the, the school psychologist at Haynes is technically point eight at Haynes and point two for preschool. Uh, the, the Flanders school psychologist is point eight Flanders and point eight specialty programs at Haynes. And the Nyanic Center school psychologist is only point eight and therefore at school four days per week. So those would all increase and we would add an additional. So no, no one's caseload would be in addition.
Okay, so was that reflected in the slide deck or in the budget book?
Let me show you in the slide deck, Rich. If you take a look here, out of the S R funds, the seven seventy two, you can see here, this is where we were increasing. Psychologists, point two, point two, point two, to make them one point O. They're all point eight right now. Then if you, if you scroll down to the A R P funds, um, we talked about, um, right. Let's sit down further here. This is a preliminary thought of the elementary school psychologist, the one point O that Kim just mentioned. Solely dedicated to Lily Behan's specialty program. So we, as an, as a proposed plan for some supports.
Okay, thanks. The next question is in terms of slide fifteen for the, the coda. Maybe I, I didn't, maybe I'm not seeing stuff, um, that's right in front of my eyes, but. Will there be a coda for Flanders and Lily Behan as well, or? Because I just heard Nyanic Center was mentioned.
Right, it's, it's, so there is a current occupational therapist who covers both Eastline Middle School and Nyanic Center School. So, um, that caseload for that individual and, and it's been sort of that assignment for a number of years. It, um, has made sense because Nyanic Center was, um, a smaller, um, you know, population of students. So it's that caseload, those two buildings combined, that gives us the need for the additional, um, service provider. And, you know, we looked at reconfiguring caseloads. The Haynes caseload is large because they service the. General education population at Haynes as well as the specialty programs in preschool, which are all located on that campus. Once you get into high school, you have a few fewer students on the OT caseload. They tend to, um, exit, if you will. And so the Flanders. OT currently covers the high school and Flanders. So, and that's manageable. But what's, what's grown and become very large is that middle school Nyanic Center shared position.
Oh, okay, okay. So the services are there, just the additional need is devoted for the Nyanic Center and middle school.
Okay, right, right. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question is in regard to slide sixteen and the social worker. You mentioned the fifty three and the fifty six crisis incidents. I was wondering if we have any idea what types of interventions? Were involved with these and, um, the effectiveness of the intervention. And, and I know there's confidentiality, so if you can't.
Yeah, we don't, um, you know, ask for that level of reporting from the building, Rich. I mean, they, you know, they are, um, you know, D C F referrals. So some of those, you know, involve a D C F referral. So I'm sure, you know, if D C F takes the case, then there's intervention from that side of the equation. Um, if the student gets transported to the hospital, then there could be other interventions from that perspective. At, you know, as a normal course of action, when a student leaves us the school in an emergency procedure, we always have a reentry meeting. And then there's usually a plan developed around supporting the student for whatever period of time is appropriate based on the incident that occurred. Um, and so, you know, it depends on the student, certainly if the, if another incident reoccurs. Because though we list those, um, events, some of those events are the same student having, you know. Multiple situations, which can be, you know, something that happens when a student struggles with mental health, but. You know, and, and if they already have some sort of plan, then, you know, those meetings are held and the plan may be revised. If they don't have a plan, they're likely being referred to special education or five oh four to see if they're eligible and can have some more concrete supports in place for them.
Okay, thank you. And with the social worker. Is there social work support at the middle school and elementary? Or as you were saying earlier, you're shifting more for, uh, a school psychologist at, at those levels?
So at the middle school, there's currently a one point O social worker, um, and, you know, so. In our current social work landscape, we have one shared between the elementaries, one full-time at the middle school and one full-time at the high school.
And there's, we're trying to increase it both that high school and, and that middle school, uh, level, which we mentioned.
Right, right. Okay, um, I just have. Just a couple, a few more, um. On slide seventeen. Amy, you had mentioned the, um, the literacy coaches. And that they serve as a good basis, as a model for you developing the math coaches. I'm just wondering how strong of a corollary is the research between literacy coaching? And its effectiveness and math coaching and its effectiveness? Because something that I had read, um, i- in the recent past was that. A lot of the elementary teachers, um, really through their schooling had an aversion to mathematics. So I think that, that i- it may just be one or two sources, so I, I, and I don't have them identified right now. But it, it may be a, 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 a bigger haul to, to lift than what the literacy was.
No, Rich, we got it. Don't worry about it. So, I think, so for me, the correlating data. Is Tim and I, as we look at student services and we look at the instructional experience. We have tried to implement universal design across the district for the things that we allow. So it doesn't matter, the literacy coach staff, the math coach staff, my technology coach staff. All receive the same coaching training. It doesn't matter the content that they're executing because the quality of the instructional coach, we have a set bar for. So it's interesting because where you went with the math, so all of my coaches receive the same level of training. In order to be a coach and have supported ongoing coaching modules that they complete as part of their own professional learning. Be able to make sure we're targeting and we know how to look at student data over time. And the math piece is absolutely true in regards to the elementary. Maybe an elementary teacher. Maybe, or a teacher certified at the sixth grade, might have had one course in regards to mathematics. Or they just had a content area instructional course that literally covered teaching math science and social studies in one course. I think one of the things that we're seeing is our teachers are in a little bit of the same quandary though. When it comes to reading, because that's why there's so much legislation occurring right now with reading. Elementary teachers technically right now have only two literacy courses. And what we're quickly realizing within those literacy components is it typically only covers comprehension. And it might go over an overview of teaching students letter cell, right? So what we're quickly seeing is the expectations that our teachers have in order to execute how to teach kids reading or intervene. Well, that is why district started implementing literacy code model. And so I think for me, the correlation exists in the sense that all my coaches are trained the same way, no matter what content that they're executing. And I understand some of the math will be, and I'm not a content specialist. But at the same time, we are in a little bit of the same quandary in regards to the fact that our staff who are ten years or less of us. Have a very different literacy content understanding than our staff who have been with us for ten or more years. And the bulk of our staff have been with us ten or more years. So we're almost on the same level of continuum, I guess you could say, in regards to mathematics as we were. When we brought in the literacy coaches.
Okay, so it, with implementing the, the coaching paradigm. How long do you think it would take to see the desired results? What, what have you seen historically with the literacy? What was its starting growth level and where is it at now?
Three to five years.
Three to five years, okay.
Because you have to look at trends over multiple cohorts of students. You don't want to just make decisions based on certain, certain years. You need to follow cohorts of students over time to really reap the benefit of sort of continuous sustainable change. And mastery of skill.
And the, the difference between the achievement scores? And the growth scores is that you drill down on a per individual basis to derive the growth scores. Whereas the achievement, it's just, it's pooled data from that class.
Correct. So if you're a student who achieves a level two, say, on, uh, grade in grade four. We might aim to get you to a high level two in grade five and then a mid-level three. Because what the growth index does is it honors where a student is and it takes them growing from there. So even if you're a child who gets a four, which is the highest, there are still growth measures for you as you go into fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. So that they keep moving that target. And then therefore, we really look at individual students and we don't just say, yay, our grade three students. And look at them as the whole grade level. We actually promise the community that every individual child will grow over time as part of their experience here.
So a result of the model then is a more individualized learning?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Because you can't, students, you can't intervene with students on a whole group level. It has to be an individual service that provided. So without a doubt, it is a more individualized and personalized approach. Which is, which is the expectation and the promise our board wants to keep to the town.
Okay, and then with the technology investments that we've done over this last year and that we will continue to do. Is that expected to, um, supplement the, the coaching? That a lot of the learning could be done through technological means and, and programs?
I don't want to say supplement, but I would say that it, we integrate the technology. So we either use it to enhance the learning path, we lose, use it as a means of providing students with student feedback. We use the software tools as a means of enhancing the instructional experience. But we are not looking to replace, I guess you can say, the teacher interaction with students.
Okay, and then just one last question because, um, I, I think was either Peter or Anne had. Had discussed about the requirements for the, the one-on-one supports. If kind of shown in, in your presentation, um, the table of the class sizes at Flanders and Lily Behan's. Kind of being a, a bubble that has been large for the last couple, few years. And, um, that you want to address getting them back to what the, uh, boards suggested. Numbers are for, for the class sizes. Have you seen any detriment in the scores of these cohorts of students with the larger bubble?
That, that's what we need to ascertain, Rich. Um, and we don't have last year's, you know, S P A C scores. We will have some scores from this year, but it's going to be hard to kind of, uh, I think get a, a clear picture. Formative types of assessment. We do know that this group of, of kids, it just, it's unfairness or inequality. That this group has gone from kindergarten to first grade and now on to the second grade, you know, much higher with their class sizes. Where there's going to be less attention, you know, being able to be provided versus the other classes that, you know, are surrounding them.
Okay, and the, the designation that the board came up with for the class sizes. Was that from some scientific research or where, where were those numbers from?
No, they, they looked at those guidelines. It wasn't anything really scientific about it that I recall. Tim, we, you can chime in here too. As, uh, you know, we talked about those at the board level. That was a couple of years ago. No, we didn't bring for, any for scientific. We just wanted to make sure that especially at our primary grades, you know, that K, that one, um, that two, that, you know, we were seeing. Lower class sizes across the board and then incrementally going up from there.
Okay, and, um, just finally, thank you for the, the transparency with, um, the presentations and with the budget. And again, compliments to, to Chris for, uh, that C I P, that was outstanding. So, thank you. I, I'm done.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Uh, John, we, we haven't heard from you this evening. Do you have any questions for the board this evening?
I have a few. Uh, back to the math coaches. What's the starting salary of a math coach?
Six, sixty, around sixty one, sixty two thousand, John?
Sixty one?
Sixty one, sixty, you have a middle, middle step, yep.
Yep, okay, uh, I don't know if it makes sense or if possible, but, uh. Couldn't you take, say, a high school student who is excellent in math and use them as a coach? Well, it's like in grammar school.
It's, it's great to have, you know, older kids connect with younger kids. The only issue is, the only pocket of time you have is, you know, when the high school kids leave at two ten to potentially, you know, go support. But they're not, they're not trained either. Remember, this, positions are trained staff members that are working and coaching teachers. Maybe you mentioned that seventy thirty model. So it's intervent, direct core intervention work with some of our neediest kids. Not really a high school job. We love to have high school kids working with elementary kids and helping to, to support, but not in this capacity.
The only reason I thought of it was when my son was in high school, uh, some of his friends, including himself, were very good in math. And they, uh, would coach younger kids in math. So I thought maybe that was, uh, helpful to, uh, the situation now. But anyway, uh, my other question about that, uh, the math coach was, uh, you have one math coach now that. Serves three schools?
Correct.
How does he or she schedule the time between the three schools?
She is stretched thin. You know, Amy, you want to talk about Tracy's kind of layout, uh, you know, across the course of a week?
Sure, so right now she goes to Nyanic Center one day, she goes to Lily Behan's two days. She goes to Flanders one day and then the other day she splits her seven hour and five minute day between all three locations. And an hour and a half increment.
And how many, say, students does she see a week?
Uh, currently, right now at each school, she is only able to see the max is twelve students.
Okay, so theoretically, if you, instead of going to three extra math coaches, you went to one extra. So you have two now and she, she said she sees twelve?
The max of twelve, yeah.
So then you have two teachers seeing six each in a period of a week, is that right?
Yep, but on top of that, she's also attending grade level meetings in those buildings as well. Yep. But on top of that, she's also attending grade level meetings in those buildings as well.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you said.
I said, in addition to servicing those students, she's also attending the grade level meetings and providing model lessons for teachers as well.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the professionals, what what is this starting salary?
About twenty thousand, John. We budgeted for.
Right. You you want to go from one to six ideally, right? I mean, suppose you just went one to three.
Well, then we we wouldn't be providing the services needed for for kids. This is, you know, what we had identified as kind of broken down. In the in the slides where the specific needs were as we look at going into next year. Especially, you know, for that one student that's coming back and returning from being outplayed, going to need a direct one-to-one full-time, you know, support.
How many, how many students a week is it one now?
Keep going with that. There's a lot of them that are one-to-one.
Yeah. So, yep, paras in our specialty programs work. So there are nine to 10 students in each of our specialty programs right now. When they're, so they could work with any of those students, but they tend to cover one or two students throughout their day. So they're with one student all morning and with a second student all afternoon. The case manager, the teacher, you know, makes their schedule. They go with them to lunch, to recess, to P E, to their mainstream class, you know, support them in their transitions through the hallway. So it is a a one-to-one relationship, if you will, sometimes a two-to-one relationship, depending on the age and the skills of the students. So, you know, they're they're part of a team in those specialty programs.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, just from times that that individualized education plan, that I E P plan often will drive the decisions to have that level of one-to-one support as well. And the team determines determines that as well.
Okay. Moving on, going over the object codes like Ann did. I just looked at a few, six to be exact, and. My question is, in the current budget year, like the six, these six object codes that I pull out was like field trips, repair and maintenance projects. Which I didn't move back to see the projects was transportation. Different levels of supplies and and mild reimbursement. On all those line items, in their accounts, was there any money left over? Because of the school being not fully open during the the academic year? In other words, you know, say.
John, are you asking if there were additional, if there was additional money left over this current year?
Yes.
So to answer your question, in some of those lines, yes. So for example, in instructional supplies. We we limited what they could purchase. However, those savings, transportation is not much of a savings. Because we have to hire some monitors, we have to hire, we have to have the buses sanitized. And we were still, even though it was out of savings for the virtual days, we still had to pay seventy percent of the contract. Because unlike, and to answer one of the answers questions, we have to go to an app through an application process when we apply for these grants. So for example, the S R two grant that we're applying for that's due on the nineteenth. One of the questions is, did you continue to maintain your contractual relationship with not only employees, but with your contracted services? And they spell out transportation as one of those services. So while we realize a bit of a savings, it was offset by, you know, the monitors. And the supplies and some of the other savings was offset by the amount of P P E that we have to purchase. The additional salaries we needed for virtual, for our virtual biking on program that we implemented for those kids that are remote. We had, I'm trying to think of what else was on that list of other expenses that we had incorporated specifically for COVID. That I think Jeff and I come each month to the Board of Finance and share. So that's why we're right now projecting roughly a deficit of five hundred thousand.
But a lot of these expenses that will fall into the realm of COVID will be reimbursed by either gear or S S.
Not all of those, no.
I know, some of them, some of them.
Correct, incorporated.
So, all right, okay.
Yeah, I think that first, very first round of S R S R one was, I think it's two hundred.
We have a Corona relief grant of two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and that went to offset some of the expenses. A hundred thousand went to offset P P E, the remaining balance went to offset some of our, some of our other COVID-related expenses. But it certainly didn't unfortunately offset the whole, the entire amount of expenses we had to spend due to COVID.
Yeah, I was just going to say, any of the line items or the object codes that were related to facilities, and I think Mary Ann had on some of it. We did have a bunch of additional COVID expenses, like the temporary employees that we brought in to help with cleaning. Also, you know, we took really good advantage last summer of getting a lot of deferred work done as well. So I think we're going to finish barely in the bracket, you know, that's my always my goal every year is to spend all the dollars wisely. But I think facilities, we're going to be very hard pressed to just finish right barely in the black this year. Because we've been, you know, working head and spending on the additional COVID and cleaning expenses and whatnot. So anything related, any of those items related to facilities, don't expect to see any funds remaining in those this year.
Well, I have you on here. Of of all the capital items that were listed. Like the roof, the hivacs, and the doorways and whatnot. If you had to prioritize some of those projects, which ones would be the most important to take care of first?
I believe in the capital improvement list, project list you have, they actually do have a priority assigned to each of those projects. So I did, I did assign that.
Okay.
Look a couple pages in, John, in that list. You can see the middle category starts, says priority, and then it starts with the number two and then goes down from there.
Okay, got it. Okay, thanks. And one question to Jeff on his sheet.
Yes. That was the first or the last one that you that I showed. Is that that with the three point seven nine at the end or the?
Yes, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
The bar that says two point seven six goes from there up to four point one nine. The dollar number for that jump is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a little more than that. Did you say that? Mostly salaries?
That, correct, John. That jump right there is, let me show you right here. That's this right here. That's these these positions. That's what caused that to jump.
Okay, that's if all of those are filled.
Exactly. Those are, those are in the operating budget. That that's what caused it to go up that amount.
Okay.
Right there.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
One more question, talking about the different funds. Every other week, we hear that the federal government is assigning more more money because of the COVID expenses that came out. I don't know if I, where I saw it, but it was another, it was like a hundred and forty-two million dollars that might be out there coming through. To help the the towns and the school systems. Do you know or heard of any money's coming from the feds in the next six to twelve months?
I I've heard rumors and Mary Ann, have you heard anything other than rumors beyond the A R P funds? But we'll we'll see what, if we get some more information maybe soon. I I don't, but that's all we've heard is rumors. But no, nothing beyond A R P and S R two.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, John.
All right, John, thanks for the questions. So I just have a few specific questions for you folks this evening. I don't think I'll be more than five minutes. I'm starting to come around a little bit to this idea of the math coaches, particularly maybe at the middle school when I look at that chart. I don't like those numbers. And if you're telling me that a math coach is going to be able to improve that growth rate, I'm all for that. So that's the middle school. In terms of the elementary schools, we have one floater covering three different schools. But I keep going back to the inequity of the population of those schools. So if I look at the student population of Niantic Center School, I think you're projecting one seventy-eight. And Lily B Haynes is two thirty-four. So have you considered point five F T E math coach for Niantic Center School?
But the only, the only catch with that, Camille, remember Lily B Haynes, that that population, you got the specialty programs are all there. So you kind of have a different animal of a of a elementary school. Cam, I don't know the total exact number of the specialty programs. I want to say upwards of sixty to sixty-five kids.
Well, there are sixty students just in preschool, to be honest, you know, there's sixty to seventy preschool students. And so between the three specialty programs there, you would, I would say, you'd have thirty. So about a hundred to a hundred and ten of the students at Lily B. If if that's how our enrollment number is calculated that Camille is seeing, I wouldn't want to muddy the water. So but, you know, that's that's roughly the additional population on that school campus.
Like as part of the, that preschool group isn't necessarily being part or seeing, you know, the math coaches per se. You're looking at the the other grades.
I also don't know if preschool is counted in the number Camille's looking at. So that may be in addition to.
So I would say no, because I'm looking at slide twenty-two and I've just added up the number from grades one through four.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
So then about thirty of those students are in the specialty programs and are probably receiving alternate curriculum. But that doesn't mean that Tracy isn't involved right now, our current math coach, in supporting those teachers as well. It's maybe a different level math, it may be a different approach, but she is still a resource to those teachers in the building as well.
So if if I could just add to, so if we just think about this mathematically, so the way that we think in education, we think in sort of a tier triangle. And if you think about a hundred percent of our students, typically the average would be twenty percent of our students need intervention. So if you just took a building that has a hundred and seventy students in it and you took twenty percent of that. At any time on average, you're going to have thirty-four students that are in need of intervention. That's just me using a low number of Niantic Center, right, with the with the thirty-four. So then those are thirty-four students that have not serviced by the math coach and or the regular education teacher. They only have potentially maybe a paraprofessional in their class that might help. But what we want to be able to say to parents is that if your child is in need of further intervention. We don't go and give your child a less qualified teacher. We give them a more qualified teacher because they have a targeted skill set in coaching and being able to target that intervention. So if you look at that from a caseload perspective, that one math coach could have a caseload of thirty-four students that they need to intervene on. And then they have all of the classroom teachers of K to four that may need to coach on how to teach mathematics more effectively. So that's where, and I'm just, I'm using the one seventy, Camille, just because you quoted the one seventy from the center.
Right. So at Lily B H, then Lily B Haynes, it would be fair to say that the caseload could be forty-six then. The population there is two thirty-four and you're saying twenty percent are in need of intervention services. It could be forty-six. So so the students at Niantic Center School are actually at an advantage. With having a full-time math coach available to them with only ten teachers versus twelve in Lily B Haynes and twelve in Flanders. So I'm just, you know, I'm not an expert. I'm not trying to tell you guys what to do at all. I'm just saying from a number standpoint, do we really need three F T Es added this year? Or can we get by with two? And you don't have to answer that question, but I think it's fair for you to know that that's kind of what I'm trying to process. And while we're on the subject of the numbers. Having two second grade teachers because the numbers of the anticipated classroom size is slightly outside of the guideline. I'm not sure makes a lot of sense to me either, since Niantic Center School, the anticipated class size is fifteen. So again, I'm not saying what to do because I'm just a numbers person. And I'm thinking, wow, how simple would it be to take one of those students each from Flanders and Lily B Haynes and put them in Niantic Center School? So you don't have to hire two new teachers. You'd still be within, you'd still be within the recommended class size that the Board of Education is recommending. So how can we achieve that if it is at all possible? Would we have maybe a couple of parents volunteering to take their kids to Niantic Center School? Would the redistricting maybe improve the allocation amongst the schools? So this is, this is really nothing new. This is a concern I had since we voted on three elementary schools years ago. Like is staffing each one equally when the population is not equal?
You couldn't just move them around, Camille, just to be clear, because you, we couldn't provide them transportation because they'd be outside of the domains of the bus runs. So we tried that before redistricting, offered to parents, you know, would you be interested in moving your child to help balance out? I think we had maybe two parents that took us up on it, but they had to provide their own transportation for their kids. So we couldn't, we couldn't force it to happen, but.
And yep, I totally understand and I think that's fine. But then I don't think that we as a district have an obligation to hire two extra second grade teachers for one extra pupil. In each of those classes.
You remember, the other reason for that was because this cohort of students, they started in a large group in kindergarten. Large group this year in first grade going on as a large group. So they've had a disadvantage over the last couple of years of having a larger class size than others. And, you know, you get past grade three, it becomes that much harder to make sure that all students have built that foundation for for reading, you know, and for their appropriate mask. So that was part of the rationale to to assist this group of second grade students and and balance that out a little bit more.
Did you have, I I know that I think it was Amy that had suggested or alluded to. There was data that substantiated improvement in performance based on the E L A. Teachers that were hired a few years back. Is that something that you have that you can share with us? The reading coaches?
Benchmark data. Yes, we have E L A benchmark data.
Yeah, okay. Would you be able to forward that to us so we could take a look at that?
Sure. We are just, we are one day away from vacation with our E L A staff. So I I will try to attend to formula that request prior to end of day tomorrow, but just to put that as a disclaimer.
Oh, no problem. When you get back from vacation, that's fine because we won't be.
I'm not going. They're going.
Okay. All right. We see. So if we were to fund you one hundred percent, you got all of these positions filled. What new initiatives would we be looking at next year? Or is this pretty much the end of your wish list, so to speak?
Let's see, it would be the end of the math coach wish list, list of the, you know, looking at the high school. This is really what we wanted to capitalize on was the elementary and middle school. And that's, as Tim says, been, you know, on the hopper for four years now. A little too early, I guess, Camille, to answer that question, just not knowing what we don't know as we move into next year. But we do know that these dollars and pots of money are going to be able to allow us potentially, as we work together collaboratively, to see which additional, you know, one-year staff do we need to hire? You know, in a one-year position or a two-year position, and then they either disappear or through attrition, maybe they get absorbed into the budget. What we don't want to have happen, obviously, is we don't want to come down the road to you and say, hmm, you know what? We have a seven percent increase because, you know, we need all these positions now and our operating budget needs to fund them. So that's what we need to avoid, that's why we're cautious with that four hundred and thirty one thousand and not going to too high or too. Because we don't want that to hurt us down the road.
And and I was a little bit concerned about that at first too, but I think that, you know, it makes sense to watch that, look at retirements coming forward. And maybe, maybe uh being able to absorb that in the future year without a big impact. But then I think I saw on the slide that for the next budget year twenty two, twenty three, you were considering using an additional five hundred thousand for your operating budget in another subsequent year. So no, uh, was that page, let me see.
No, it was just the only five hundred thousand was for, there's, there's remaining monies left that we, we haven't uh identified to use yet through the A R P. I don't know if.
Right, so page thirty, yeah, so page thirty.
Yep, five hundred and three thousand, this one, uh, this one here.
Yeah, the five hundred and three thousand, so for exit, for example, if you look at the pathways coordinator, that's another full time position. That would be, that would catch us in that situation where, you know, that funding is good for one year, but what happens the year after that if we still need that position?
And that, that's the question, yeah, those are the things that these need to be discussed, uh, you know, at length. Um, with our F F O committee, the Board of Ed to see, you know, where, where do we want to put? We have an opportunity here with some great, uh, you know, some dollars. Where do we want to put that, you know, the the most bang for the buck? Um, and is, if it is a one year, uh, great, maybe it gets us back on track, you know, with those internship programs and so forth that they had mentioned. Um, maybe it's two, but there's, we have to be careful, we can't absorb all that into the operating budget, we clearly know that.
Okay, so uh, one more question and one more comment. The comment is, you know, I agree with Dan Santoro, I kind of like the idea of maybe using some of these ones for capital projects. That would have um a favorable impact on the budget in subsequent years by not having to. Um, you know, finance those capital projects. And my final question is the safety personnel, I see that's going up another seven percent this year. I think that went up thirty percent last year. Is that another position that you're, I didn't see that position anywhere in this presentation tonight?
Yeah, it was all at Mariana, just it was part time position that was.
Camille, there was, um, there was a part time position added um to assist with our alternative high school and then.
It's a coastal connection.
Program, and then there was just, I think, three quarters of an hour um added or a half an hour added to the Flanders School. And maybe three quarters of an hour added um at the middle school for the security to assist with um at the middle school. Uh, when one person leaves, there's after school programs and such, so to help with that. And then Flanders um with the uh after, before and after.
Yeah.
They get in earlier, so that there was a little bit of time added there.
All right, thank you. Um, so pretty much that sums up my questions. I think we were pretty thorough in going through the books and I think we all have a pretty good understanding. But I would like to give our board members one more opportunity if there's a follow up question. Uh, but I would ask our board members to make it brief, keep it to one minute or two at the most. If there's a burning question you have that, you know, surfaced again because of this ongoing discussion, now's your opportunity. Okay, Rich Steele. Um, so you have to unmute yourself, Rich.
Jumping off of your commentary about the the math coaches. I'm wondering, in terms of the the growth measurements, it it was interesting to hear. About the math coaches and the population that they intervene with versus not intervening with. And do you have data that parses by those students that received intervention versus not? And do you also have parsing by grade for the growth data?
Yeah.
Okay. Would we be able to see that at some time?
Yeah, it's just gonna, yeah, I'll have to.
That's okay, we're not going to deliberate for a while, so appreciate.
Yeah, it's good, it's good, it's gonna take time to create a big up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rich, anybody else, Anne Chukalo?
Okay, just two quick questions. Um, will you get rid of the virtual Viking program in the fall? And if so, can those teachers or, you know, resources be reallocated?
We will get rid of that, our plan is to definitely get rid of that program in the fall, um, and it will no longer exist. Uh, there's two of the teachers are part of that program that we allowed to work remotely, they're ours, they will come back into the classroom. Um, the rest of them, we hired as one year staff members. So uh, we'll have positions for them at the end of this year, uh, unless they apply for a position that's open and they end up getting the job.
Yep, there's still uncertainty, there still is a bill on that's active at the state level to mandate that um districts or. Something provides virtual uh learning uh programs.
There is, Tim, but we won't run it the way we ran it this year.
Right.
We won't run the virtual Viking program. If we're, if there is that option, kids will have to zoom into the classroom, we're not going to run what we ran this year.
Right, but we haven't yet, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that 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 bill is not, is is still live.
Exactly, there, we might be for, under certain criteria, we might have to allow some students who meet the criteria to still zoom in. But there wouldn't be any impact uh or cost other than um the impact on the teacher in the classroom if they're forced to to have a, you know, this child zooming in as well as the class in front of them.
Gavin.
I do think it is important to note that even though our students are back five days a week, we do still have two hundred and ninety six students that are virtual liking.
Some will come back.
But just know that, just know that out of our district currently, we do, we do still have almost three hundred students that are virtual.
Okay, two more quick question, math coaches, again, just last one. What is their educational background, do they have a teaching or do they have math degrees? Like what do, what is the requirements?
So we require elementary certification. And then you would put preferred possibly special education certification as well as math certification. So typically what happens is you have a baseline would be the level that they teach. And then you would have preferred secondary certification requirements as well.
But they would have the math certification?
Potentially, not necessarily, they could have an elementary education because that covers K to six.
Okay, but if they're supposed to be specialized teaching, the other teachers, like shouldn't you require something that would have? You know, like more of a math background?
Yes, we can't, so there, so there's a literacy consultant specialist certification with the state of Connecticut, there is no math version of that. So what a lot of districts do is they hire an elementary certification, so I guess what I'm saying. I wouldn't want to put myself in a box because I might end up with a math coach who's been doing it for a couple of years, who wants to come into the position. But they don't have a math degree, but they've been a math coach successfully in another district. And I wouldn't want to tie my hands, so that's why typically you would sort of put your identified certification. And then what we would prefer to see, and yeah, priority would be given to those with with math content credentials and experience.
Okay, last question, um, just, um. Let's see. Going back on Camille's question, you said you had the the one class that was large size, like twenty three kids or something for kindergarten and first grade. And you wanted to get the second grade teachers. So my question is, in this large group of students, I mean, do you see a lower test scores? Is there anything that's, that's uh, that shows that they have? It's been detrimental that it's a larger class size versus the other schools that have the smaller class size or recommended class size, excuse me.
And I've not gone back and specifically looked, um, Amy, I don't know if Danielle has talked about uh and Melissa as well, the specific uh.
Yeah, so with benchmarking that we've done in both November and March, yeah, we are seeing trends of that current grade level. In regards to literacy development in particular, we are seeing a decrease in performance.
Compared to the other schools, okay.
Yeah, and the other grade.
That's what I meant, okay, thank you. You guys did a great job, really appreciate it. You make our job easier when you, you make it clear and answering all the questions, thank you.
Yes, John.
I have one question, one comment. Um, all the funds that are coming in. Um, the state and the federal government. Uh, do you have to report where that money is spent to?
Yes, yes, we absolutely will do, yes, we will.
And which funds are that you have to report on?
Right now, the the S R funds, uh, we have, we've had to report on S R one, we are going to have to report on S R two. And we're in the process of filing that, which has to be in by April nineteenth. And then we're just waiting for specifications of A R P, but we'll have to report on that one as well.
Okay, thanks, and my comment is, I'm gonna call it windfalls. Of all the windfall we have coming in with the grants. Instead of trying to find ways to spend it like on extra staff for whatever purpose or programs or whatever purpose, wouldn't it be wise? To put some of that extra money aside into an account? That you could use for unexpected expenses that come up like next year or the year after?
I I I know we definitely don't want to spend it all in one year, that's for sure. Um, A R P is the three year, twenty twenty four, right, yes. September twenty twenty four, we have the ability to use that money, John, until. So there, so there's, there's some time there, so yeah, we don't, we don't want to spend it all in one year, that's for sure. Uh, it goes back to what we don't know yet too, that we're going to face next year. We need time to ascertain, you know, where should we put, be putting the allocation of money uh over the next couple of years.
Exactly, that's what I was, yeah, concerned about.
Yeah, that's a good, thank you. Question.
Hey. Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, um, Amy, you had mentioned the uh virtual Viking total number that uh current total number, and I didn't hear you. I just was wondering what that was.
Two hundred and ninety six.
Two ninety six, okay. Um, and is that a higher or low of where you have been or?
That is the lowest we have been.
What was the highest?
Um, four ninety one.
Okay, all right, and then my other, um, thank you, my other um question or request is, um, in years past, sometimes, um, uh. You would make uh in presenting your budget, some comparisons with your Derg with, you know, uh, Stonington or other towns. So on, maybe perhaps I was thinking through this discussion on the topic of the math coaches. Um, what's happening in these other, you know, comparable uh, you know, communities uh that you, you, that you are. Uh, you know, I guess you have like four in your Derg or whatever it is, I can't recall. But um, so what are they doing with respect to math deficiencies, if any, if they do have them? Are they um in uh hiring coaches, are they using, you know, some online uh, you know, educational system to augment? Uh, to to help solve the problem? So if you have any info on that, that might be helpful.
I do.
Okay.
I can share that.
That's all I have, thanks so much.
Okay, thanks, Anne. All right, I think that's everybody. Um, I'm sure if there's some extra questions, any of these folks would be happy to answer them for us, just shoot them an email. Um, we don't begin deliberations for a few more weeks, so we have a a lot more to digest. But I just, I really want to thank you all again for this presentation, it's, it's really. It's um professional, it's. Very easy to follow and um. I don't know, I I just think sometimes pictures are worth a thousand words too with some of these graphs, so great job. Um, thank you for your time, we'll move on to board, yes, Tim.
Can I just say, I just want to just insert one, one piece, and that is that, um, as Jeff said during his presentation, the early part. The, our F F O, our finance committee, will be meeting to continue conversations and discussions about what to do with the relief fund money. And it would be, it would be wonderful if a couple of the Board of Finance members would like to sit in on that and actually participate. This was one of the ideas that uh, at our board meeting uh on Monday, uh, one of our very, uh, very esteemed uh board members, Kate Steele. Uh, recommended, and I thought it was a great idea, so uh, if that, if that, Jeff, and I'm sure you'll keep, people posted as to when the F F O meeting will be scheduled, so.
Yeah, absolutely, already working on that, working on that date, so we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, that sounds great, yeah, Jeff, if you could let me know what date that is and I'll work on getting a couple of members present at those meetings to. Just provide some input from our perspective here, that'd be great, thank you for the invitation. Okay, so with that, I think we will move on to board comments. Again, thank you all for the presentation, um, and uh enjoy your vacation next week for those who get it. And um, yeah, congratulations on opening one hundred percent, that's great news.
Thanks, everyone, good to see you.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you, good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. So with that, we'll move on to uh the next agenda item, which is board comments. Do any of our Board of Finance members wish to? Have any parting comments for this evening's meeting? No, no comments, okay, great, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Okay, thanks, John, second, thanks, Dan Santoro, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thanks so much, everyone, have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Bye.